Thank you all for coming. It has been suggested that, I'm sure you all know it, but this is a selectmen, regular selectmen's meeting. Well, it is a regular, special regular selectmen's meeting. And it's not a public hearing. But we usually let the people speak who want to speak, so.
Make the motion to open the meeting.
Second.
Second, made in second, is any discussion? All is in favor? Four zero. The meeting is open. First item on the agenda is the warrant review.
So, to my knowledge, you had approved the warrant as is, but if you'll remember back in December when we were going over the transfer station budget, Kenny was talking about the money for grinding, is it called demolition wood?
Yeah.
Grinding the demolition wood. And he was fairly confident at that time that he would be able to disclose of the wood within 2016 fiscal year. That didn't happen, so he has asked to have a warrant article added to the warrant, excuse me, to carry over $10,000 for that purpose. So it would read Article 42, see if the town will authorize the following account to be carried forward to the current year. Solid waste demolition wood, $10,000. And I just realized I did not give you a copy of that. You guys want a copy?
Okay, that's not it, that's not it.
No.
It's not here.
Because we haven't approved it yet, so.
Questions, comments? Select Board.
I guess I got a question. Can we do that? We're already in another fiscal year? Haven't the books been closed on last year?
But you carried over other stuff. You carried over the $20,000 for the full barn.
That's in this warrant, isn't it?
But this is a new warrant under New Year's.
Right.
I guess what I'm saying, we're into January.
Right.
When we did this before, we was in, I believe, in December, correct?
Right, because she hasn't, because the town meeting hasn't happened yet. You don't know if that article's going to be approved or not.
None of this is approved yet by the town.
I know. I just, I guess I just question whether you can do that and all, but maybe.
Well, I think basically, Rick, is that all the monies now are in the, moved to the general fund. And once it's approved at town meeting, the articles that we put before it now that are carried over would come back out of the general fund and go to where the, how the town allows us to put them back there. That's my understanding. So this would be no different if we had done it last year. Really, it doesn't matter, because the monies have been handled, all been handled the same way. Except, the only monies that would have been really carried forward is monies that were in articles last year. The new articles that request to carry some monies forward will be acted on at town meeting, and those monies will be carried forward.
Yeah, I guess, I guess so.
I hear what you're saying, but.
I just.
I ask that question.
Okay.
That's kind of.
Well, I'm.
The accountant says we can do it. I'm just, that was the reply I got. The accountant says we can do it, so.
What's that?
If it's legal, I'm fine with it. If it isn't, I'm not.
Me too.
Will that article be in the same area of the warrant as the articles, the basic articles of, on the transfer station? Or are we?
No, it'll be at the end.
Easiest thing at this point, just to put it at the end, Jack.
Didn't we do the full barn in the, within the fire department area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we do this the same way?
But we had that before. Because you guys have already approved the warrant. We're making amendments to the warrant tonight. So if you're making an amendment to the warrant, it has to be at the end.
All right. Budget Committee, it's all over this. Select Board, those in favor? Four zero. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee? One, two, three, four, five, we're missing one.
Five, one missing, one absent. Five, yes.
Oh, I'm missing, okay. I left him a message.
I'm sorry?
I left him a message.
When do you want to discuss this?
Yeah.
Okay. There's one additional request which Kerry passed out here, it's a short one, three sentences. For a moratorium on, I'll read it. Shall the town of Belgrade, Maine enact a moratorium on the personal use, possession, cultivation of marijuana, and the operation of retail marijuana establishments, including retail stores, cultivation, manufacturing, and testing facilities, and social clubs? Moratorium would be, to be for 180 days, can be renewed once. I think the renewal, if it is to be renewed, we have to show progress, something's been done. A moratorium is to give us time to look at the situation, develop regulations if we, if we need any, and just give us some breathing room.
How does the public know it's for 180 days?
That's the law. We can say that in there, but that's the law.
How does this affect what the governor's just done? A year moratorium?
Doesn't affect at all, because we're talking about, this is town of Belgrade.
Well, which, I mean, the state of Maine's been affected by the governor. So how does this interject with that?
I don't know that it does affect, it doesn't affect, I don't believe it affects what the governor's doing. We can still have a moratorium. If his fails, then we'll cover it. We can always vote it down. Well, Moses is guessing, we do this from the floor, so it can be discussed rather than the book. So it can always vote it down if there's reason to. My opinion of what's going on in Augusta right now is it's a bit of a state of flux. And I don't know that it's, it's a sure thing that what he wants is going to happen.
I think some of the Augusta stuff that deals a lot with, and maybe Denny's up on some of the stuff too, but on the actual sale more.
Well, I really have to follow that closely. I've been saying that the moratorium is still allowed in time for rulemaking and stuff. I think the legal use, growing up to six plants is still allowed under the.
That's exactly right.
For example.
Yeah.
So if the town were to go forward and put a more on the whole thing, that would be the impact, is you couldn't start growing six plants, you couldn't start doing whatever you want to do. So that's allowed under state law. Again, I'm not.
State law also, it also exempts medical marijuana facilities from a moratorium. So another just doesn't go with medical marijuana. If you want to exempt personal use, that's the six plant deal. You can say that, but.
I guess we're going to do the article. We should be educated to answer questions that are going to come up. You know, we should be able to not just say, well, I guess. You know, we should be saying, this is what the impact is, and this is what, these are the options it will give us.
I agree. I agree with you. It has to go before town meeting.
I know, but I'm just saying, if we're going to do the article as a group here, we need to say, okay, we're going to be, we can't just throw an article out there and sit there like, no, I don't know. You know?
I agree with you.
At that moment, we just need to know we're committing to becoming a little bit educated about this process, so.
Makes sense. Kim?
So is this, will you form a committee, or will the selectmen research it more, or what kind, how are you, what steps are you going to take to make progress?
I had envisioned the planning board being involved. A selectman would probably be involved, at least, at least one or two representatives from the select board. But going to the planning board, they would need guidance from the select board. And what Ernie says about knowing more about the situation is absolutely true. This was kind of, put this together so we could discuss it tonight and hopefully get it included on this warrant to go before the town, so.
I guess I'm not sure what the planning board would do.
Normally, they're the ones that get involved with ordinances. They promulgate the ordinance. They'll work with, they can work with KV COG to do it. In fact, we can do it on our own, if we want.
I guess, I think maybe a better answer to your question might be that if we communicate with the planning board, and then we sit here with the article, and voters are asking, well, you know, do they want to approve this moratorium or not? This is what the planning board, we would involve the planning board, and these would be the discussions we would have, so that we would have a clear understanding of, if you approve this, this is the road we would go down and do a lot of research with the planning board, have them do the research, and get the legalities of everything, and then come back with a proposal, potentially.
Yes, Dan.
Well, I just have two comments. One, I would look at what the vote outcome was on roughly one in the town of Belgrade. I think you'll be surprised at the number and likely success of this passing, but I don't know. And I'm not speaking in pro or con, I'm just saying. The other thing, if, what you're doing, it doesn't say anything about here what the moratorium's for. It just says we're going to stop it. So as I heard you talking, what you were saying is, we want to study it, we want to try to see whether or not it fits into what Belgrade really wants to do, we want to come up with a proposal, and then we want the town to act, to react to that proposal. It should say that, rather than just say we want a moratorium, because for what purpose, you just, it sounds like you just want to stop it. And I think some people might need it that way. Yeah. Well, I guess that's all I can add.
Well, that's good, that's, that's right, Kenny. I mean, checking the vote would be a good starting point.
Dan?
Yeah, I just looked up real quick. Would the governor sign the law today? It was passed by, it's not the legislature, it's a moratorium on the sale and social clubs and everything else. It doesn't affect personal use.
That's right.
Yeah. So just, that's what went into law to that. So basically, it's given the state time to figure out how to regulate with, set up with, if they want a business misfought or not misfought, you know, figure out how they're going to regulate it, and how they're going to control it. That's all their moratoriums do.
He has a couple of other additions he'd like to put on that. One is to move it from Department of Agriculture to Department of Alcohol.
He did that today.
He did it today, which made a ton of sense to me.
Well, yes, Jack.
Yeah, if the town passed this proposal as it is, how is the town going to enforce it?
I'll go down with the big stick.
Let's carry that. A machete to cut the plants, is that what you're going to do?
I'm all in.
You're going to be busy, because it's a while going.
The town office gets a call that such and such stole it down, they're selling marijuana. What's the next step?
Call the state police.
Well, that would be.
Except for everything else.
If we have an ordinance, you call the state police and they'll enforce it. But, no.
If there's an ordinance, yeah.
College here? Go ahead.
Your, your, your ordinance reads, use and all of that, right?
Yeah.
Use, possession, cultivation.
And the state allows it. So if you move outside the town of Belgrade, you can still use it, right? I, I would suggest you might not want to put the use et cetera in.
Well, it seems to me it ought to follow what the state is doing.
Well, I think, I think the town is obligated to that. We can make, I thought that we were underst, I thought it was understood that the town operates under a state, premise of the state law, and it makes changes like noise ordinances that, that fit the town, not, not run contrary to what the state has already established for law.
Well, but look what happened with fireworks.
I think that.
There are towns that said, there are towns that said locally, we don't allow fireworks. Well, there's also towns saying they don't want marijuana, and they've opted out. Oakland is one. A number of other towns have done the same.
I will too, I think. But, as far as, the town can adopt a local ordinance, as long as it's at least as strenuous as the state, can't undercut the state. Right. But if we want to have one that says you can't.
I guess a good starting point would be, like Denny says, check with the voters. We had a huge turnout because it was a presidential election.
The vote, the state, the state vote or here in town?
Town vote.
What, what?
What was the town vote?
Well, it passed with a fair majority, is what I'm saying.
Did it?
I can't have it.
I didn't, I didn't really.
I don't, but it did pass.
So if it passed there.
It was pretty healthy?
Definitely was.
Coming back to the wording. What if we strike the personal use, possession, cultivation of marijuana, and, and if you just leave it, the operation of retail marijuana establishments, including retail stores, cultivation, manufacturing, and testing facilities, and social clubs? I think that more closely follows.
I think that is the state regulation.
Yeah.
Which is all we have to follow anyway.
Right.
Why do we even need that?
But this just gives you the 180 days to come up with recommendations.
I almost, I wasn't going to say anything more.
Yeah, this is, this is the second time.
Whatever you do, you have no guidance from the state on what you're going to do. So you're going to develop things without knowing until the state comes out with their rules, right? What you can, can, can accomplish.
We will do with it.
Why, why do you want to do this?
Where did it come from? That's what I wanted.
Well, I want to do it now, it's because it has to go to a town meeting, that's coming up, so. That's the reason I did it.
I understand, I understand the timing. My question is why? Why, what do you hope to accomplish by this?
What I hope to accomplish is what I described, that we'll have time, we'll have time to look at the situation, decide if we need to do anything more, and then promulgate regulations if they're needed. And at the same time, I don't know what's going to come of this. I don't know whether, you know, every other, every lot in town, every form of farm is going to turn into a marijuana cultivation field with waving grain, waving waves of marijuana in the wind, but.
It won't be every field, it'll be every side of Belgrade's stream, and the whole stream and stuff, which I've already had pitches taken, and the police have been out there on both my lots.
The point is, once, once the law goes into effect, and once people start doing it, it's too late to do anything about it. And if we had decided we wanted to do something about it, now's the time to do it, not after it happens. Yes, Jack?
Has, has Belgrade looked at what Oakland has done? Presumably, they have researched this some before they approved a, a similar.
I have to admit, I have not done, this is something that, it was a rush on my part, because I wanted to, this is the opportunity, the last opportunity for the town meeting that I can see, to put it on the warrant. So I wanted to put something before either, before the group to see what, see what you wanted to do with it. But no, I haven't done a lot of research on it, I have to admit.
I think my only concern would be, we already have had discussions, several discussions about strip joints, and beer piles, and stuff like that. We don't want that type of environment. And so if there's marijuana clubs, I guess that would be something we may want to allow, and the actual sale of marijuana. But you can grow your own, all you want, but selling and having the place for people to go and do it. Because you're not allowed to smoke this out in the public, so. According to the.
Though it, plus, in fact, after some of these meetings, it might be a good idea, I don't know.
I just drink alcohol.
Well, all right, I mean, if you think it's too premature, it's, we can look at it again in the future, but.
Well, I think the wording is, is wrong, and.
Yeah.
It sounds like the state has already got a moratorium on the sale and.
Yes, I would.
Places of business.
I would just ask the question, why, why would not having this in there prevent us from being able to do something in the future?
It wouldn't, but it has to, it has to be adopted by the town meeting, and we're about to have a town meeting.
But whatever we, this is, this is a moratorium, if the objective is to try to get some other information and come up with a plan, long range, that could still be done even without the moratorium. I would think.
Well, probably right.
That's why I was, that's, that was kind of the genesis of my question, why are we trying to do this? Are we doing this because we've got some kind of a deadline that we have to?
No, the only deadline was the town meeting.
Okay.
And I wanted to get something going. Or at least I wanted to ask to see if there are other folks that feel we should get something going before the town meeting, on this town meeting. So, and the answer is, maybe.
Well, I think, I think, I kind of feel the state has got the right idea at this point. And that gives us a year to look at it.
Okay.
If the vote was that lopsided, you're probably not going to get any more.
Well, the state will set the guidelines, the seal and.
That's exactly right, under the Department of.
If you're not happy with that, then we're happy.
Yeah.
All right, well, why don't we table this until a more appropriate time, whenever that is?
Yeah.
Or actually, I want to, that way I'll bring it up again.
That's right.
Suing him around.
That's not fair.
And, we're going to vote it on for that time? And we'll use the four page, the thing that everyone made. Yes, Howard?
No, I'm sorry, I, are you done with that?
Yes.
Discussion?
Well, yeah, I'm just going to withdraw, we don't have to vote on that.
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
And looking over the warrant, I was trying to identify where we identified how much of the cemetery trust was, the cemetery portfolio was going to be used to help offset the cemetery budget. And I didn't see that. It's not under the trust activities, and I don't see it in the cemetery budget listing. Where, what am I missing?
Six thousand or something?
Article 19, there's a cemetery, is there another article on the cemetery that I missed?
Did we have the number?
We have the, we have the income report from the cemetery portfolio for 2015, or 16, don't we?
But did we have that when you made your recommendation on that article?
I don't, I don't remember. I remember a number of like, six thousand or something dollars usable or something.
Yeah, I don't remember having a dollar figure for that.
Well, that's one of the things we always need to do in January, is to add that, you know, as we have done with the, with the DC Stevens Fund for Public Schools, we came up with the 15, 175, and then the academic award was the 27 out of the 500, and then the cemetery portfolio. And I would just share with you that the reason that there isn't a guftel statement in here is because there hasn't been activity within the school at this point, and we've got, I made a comment to Mike, that we will have a presentation at the next select board meeting relative to handling that. But where's the cemetery?
Well, it wasn't part of the language in last year's warrant.
That, that.
So.
That oversight may have occurred last year.
Right.
That's what we're trying to straighten now?
It wasn't there last year because there was confusion over what the cemetery trust fund may or may not have owed the general fund, or owed the cemetery expenditure account.
So, the numbers I got from the auditor today were there was $194,000 in spendable money in the perpetual care trust. That trust owes the general fund $50,000 because the money wasn't transferred in two years prior.
Right.
So what's your pleasure?
Well, those were prior year decisions.
Right.
But going forward.
So what I'm saying is you have $144,000 at your disposal, that's spendable money.
But, I understand that's the auditor's definition of spendable money.
Mm-hmm.
I would argue that in relation to our adopted policies relative to the funds, that's not the amount of spendable money. The amount of spendable money for 2017 to offset the cemetery budget should be the net income from 2016, and that's a totally separate issue from the $50,000 that obviously never was transferred as it should have been prior years.
Right.
But that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it right this year.
Right, I guess the, the part that's in my mind, that didn't come out of my mouth is, so do you want to take a chunk of that money to offset for last year that wasn't taken out of the perpetual care account? In addition to that 90%? See, I'm totally confusing there.
The 50, the $50,000 is the result of decisions that were made prior years, and were never executed by, by the treasurer, whoever.
Correct.
Okay?
Right, that has nothing to do with it.
Correct.
So you had the whole audit done, we have the final numbers, we have all the balances restated. So what I'm saying is, for 2016, you have available to you $144,000 to offset funds that were not transferred in 2016. So you could actually make a larger appropriation from the trust fund in 17, and then go back in 18 and do just the gains and losses.
It seems to me that the decision was that we were going to take whatever that fund made over a year and put it there. I believe the last time we talked to it, we did not have the report from those folks that we've got it invested with. So what we do, need to do is figure out what that, what that amount is. How much did it make last year?
Yeah, I have that.
That, that should be the, that's. Offset for this year. Yes, right. The fact that we're behind the eight ball on $50,000 was a bookkeeping issue within the town, and I, I don't know that.
Separate issue, right?
Pardon me?
It's a separate issue, though.
That's a totally separate issue.
Yes.
Right.
My thought on that was, is it, if that's over and done, we should leave that as part of the principal of the cemetery fund and move on.
The $50,000?
Yeah.
I don't know if we can.
No, you cannot do that. I asked the auditor, because it was voted on a town meeting, it belongs to general fund.
What, do we have to vote?
Then, town meeting.
Well, that's right, it does belong, belong to the general fund because it was paid out of the general fund instead of, instead of the cemetery fund.
It was voted by the town in previous year, that was never taken out.
That's right.
Of the trust.
So take it out and put it in the general fund.
That's. The fact that we never should have voted on that much money is another issue.
That's a different issue.
We can't deal with that now, that's water under the bridge.
So 142. So $12,822.
That's the number they gave?
Yep.
That's the 90%.
Of the earnings from 2016.
Yeah.
At Ken Beck Savings. Okay, that should be reducing the cemetery warrant, Article 19.
By that amount.
By that amount.
Yes.
And we can, we can do that on the floor. We can do that on the floor, because this says raise and or appropriate. So when we get to the, this article, all we need is that number.
Didn't we not say that we were going to do that before?
It seems to me we had said that. Is that what, is that what we said we were going to do? Yes, all right, then, thank you.
Well, we do it right now. Let's do it on the floor.
Do it on the floor, then.
And we don't have to change, just make more work for them.
But we have to remember we're going to do it on the floor.
Somebody will remember it.
I will remember it. Don't laugh, Paul.
I would, I wouldn't let it slide you.
All we, all we need to do, because we'll go over this, and when we get to this article, usually it's the chair or the vice chair who'll make that recommendation to adjust the wording of the article.
So we'll be raising and appropriating $55,397.
There you go.
Okay.
And taking $12,822 from the perpetual care.
But you've got to, you've got to ask for the total amount, then amend it.
Right.
You've got to ask for the total amount, then amend it.
You'll amend it to 55,397.
Yeah.
And appropriate $12,822.
Yep.
From the.
Perfect.
On whatever account, from whatever.
Problem solved.
Okay.
Back to that $50,000, separate issue for the moment. I'm surprised that comes out to a round number, because the numbers that were appropriated may come close to $50,000, but they, they weren't round numbers like that. It was like 25, 243.[1742.12] It was like twenty-five two forty-three.
Twenty-five three fourteen, one year and twenty-five thousand exactly the next.
Huh?
It was twenty-five thousand one year exactly and twenty-five thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars was the other year that wasn't taken.
Okay, so should it be fifty thousand or should it be the sum of those two numbers?
Fifty thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars is the total that we still want to transfer.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else? You must have something to say.
Well, I have some other things on the warrant, but I don't hope it's an issue.
We finished with the cemetery? Go ahead.
Okay, Article thirteen. I don't see any, nor did I see any article, other articles, that would address the assessing review. I was wondering where that money's coming from?
The what?
Assessing review, the salary of assessor. Last year you had it under this article and there was twenty-two thousand two hundred.
That was the salary of the assessor.
I assumed.
Yeah.
But I don't find it here anywhere.
That's part of administration.
So you added the assessing review in the three hundred and thirty-two thousand?
Assessing review, basically, assessor's salary.
Right, yeah. It's a contracted position.
Yep, right.
It's not a...
There is a special review, it's like town law.
No, 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 it's not, it's not, it's the assessor.
Right, his, his salary's under...
Well, that would be town positions and this is a contract position. That's why I'm pointing out.
This is still under re-accounting, changing accounting.
Maybe something, I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
Yeah, assessing and auditing.
So is that why the three thirty-two, why that, why the administration line went up by roughly forty-five thousand, twenty-two thousand in there for that? And what else is in that line?
Yeah, and code enforcement has been followed. Code enforcement's been...
Oh, you code had a, that's your connection there.
I looked at some of Denny's questions before we got started here. They're questions we're gonna get from the floor, so they're certainly valid and we ought to listen to them.
Never say what, I've always liked to hear from Denny.
Well...
Well, what we did, as I say, just what we did is as part of the administration budget, there's a category under there for professional services. That's our assessing, our auditing, our legal fees, and I think I, IT, IT support are all grouped under that heading, so.
Okay.
What else you have, Denny?
I couldn't find anywhere, and I think I got an answer, but I'm not quite sure I understood it as well. PISA used to be broken up so that, because it's contracted with the county and then with the state police and stuff. And it used to be a separate article. Well, there isn't a separate article. I was talking to Carrie earlier today and she said it was included in fire and rescue. So I looked at the numbers between last year and this year for fire and rescue and they're pretty much the same for the, for the department, roughly two hundred and twenty-nine thousand of their bills. So was, the PISA is generally around thirty-two thousand roughly, unless it went up. So was there a reduction in the fire and rescue department of thirty-two thousand that they allowed for you to then have PISA in that line?
Yeah, there was. They took out twenty thousand dollars for a special project, the unclassified, which is the dues and education licensing. That was down forty-three hundred dollars and a bunch of other things were moved to facilities.
Okay, so the entire budget, the fire and rescue department minus the PISA, not counting the PISA, should be around twenty thousand rather than two hundred and twenty-nine. Yeah, PISA picks up around two hundred and twenty-nine. Okay, just question.
Denny, lots of that stuff has been moved from one area to the other. And the auditors wanted it that way and we didn't have any problems, so that's why some of those numbers are not gonna be equitable.
That's fine. I'm just asking the question.
Denny, how would you, let me just interrupt you for a second if I can, because what you're doing is what a number of us have talked about in a number of previous meetings, and that is how best to communicate that, that issue. What, should there be, should there be a statement, a denim to the town report?
Well, my understanding is...
What would be helpful?
Carrie was that the auditor required, recommended various changes in the way we would write the articles. And some of these articles are ready to accommodate those changes. If you can mention PISA, you can mention assessors, code enforcement, whatever you wanna do, that might help.
The thought, the thought that we had is that Carrie would make a declaration, if you will, at the beginning of the meeting to explain the changes and why they happened.
Okay, so we ran along because I don't wanna be here anymore. Belgrade Lakes Regional Business Group, again, there was a request, and I understand it's under the, the social, I have it.
Social service donation?
Yes.
It's under social services donations, like for Memorial Days, July Fourth, holiday stroll, whatever it is. My recollection is a lot of, all of the special requests, like from the hostess group or from all of these different groups, will all move to the referendum day, the day before, so that the towns can vote on these. This is a special request from the Belgrade Lakes Regional Business Group, and I'm wondering why it's being treated differently than the other groups. And differently in the sense that in the past, it was clearly stated that in fact we should be voted on in a secret referendum day, where people aren't influenced by a non-voter, it'll bring the actual...
Which one are you talking about, Denny?
Belgrade Lakes Regional Business Group, which is in the article twenty-six, called July Fourth.
Oh, yeah, I got you, yeah.
The one for the donation to the town is in the booth. The one for the donation to the town, half a million dollars.
Oh, I know.
That's in the booth.
He's talking about fireworks.
Oh, fireworks, yeah, the fireworks, it's been...
That's always been voted on in the referendum part. And part of the reason for that was, the same as it was for hostess or any of these other special requests that came in. I don't really care myself. I just raise it because I saw it and I said, well, wait, that's different. And why is the, why is that being treated differently from these other requests?
I'm glad you pointed that out because I've argued several times about the things that should go into the booth. And obviously, you was telling me, and you know the history of a lot of this stuff, why, and that's how it ended up there because that's the way the people really wanted it. They wanted a chance to vote. So I don't know why it's there, it's there.
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm just raising the vote.
I think it was there last year too, Dan.
No.
No, it was on the booth, it was in the booth.
Was it in the booth?
It's always been in the booth.
I mean, if you're a warrant, if you want it in the booth, we can change it. Now's the time to change it.
That's right.
Put it in the booth.
Let's do it in the booth, but we don't wanna change...
That one or all the social service donations?
Well, all the social service donations, that's always been in the booth.
The ones that have been in the booth. And there were a couple there that are social service items that the town does.
Memorial Day is one the town does.
Yeah. The holiday stroll is for the police, that's what that's following.
Yeah.
Okay, so the Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, and the holiday stroll, can those all be one article in the booth?
No.
No, they stay right there.
Fourth of July is separate.
Fourth of July is separate.
The town's always done Memorial Day and the stroll. So that's the only one you have.
So the Fourth of, Fourth of July, did the only one that goes in the booth?
It's something the town does not necessarily do. A group does that and we give them money for it. The other things are things the town does and pays for.
So going up with July Fourth, they had a new warrant, a new article in the booth?
They have to do it. We're gonna have to renumber these. Probably it wouldn't hurt to push the cemetery back with the cemetery. We're gonna have to read them. But we're gonna, we're gonna have to renumber it, so, and that's all it is, really. It's just renumbering things, so that shouldn't be an issue for any purpose.
We don't want the budget committee mad or something.
We gotta drop dead date on this? When's our, when's our town, when's the town meeting? I mean, the review?
Twenty-first.
We'll have the public hearing on the Thursday.
Do you have a good time?
We have to approve this warrant tonight because Cheryl's gotta get the balance written, the absentee ballots.
When will the absentee ballots be available? Fifteenth of February.
All right, so you need to do that and you wanna add... Okay, so forty, there'll be another secret ballot article, forty-five hundred dollars for fireworks. So what that's gonna do is that's gonna, on Article twenty-six, that's gonna change that bullet point on July fourth to two hundred sixty-five dollars because the town still raises and appropriates that much money for police coverage for that event. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Was the two fif, forty-five hundred in there?
Forty-five hundred is the donation for fireworks and the balances for the police.
Yep, two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five.
Why was the fireworks forty-seven sixty-five?
Because it was forty-five hundred plus two...
It was July fourth, the whole bill.
The fireworks plus police coverage.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
So it's just the police coverage is, the police coverage is gonna stay at two sixty-five?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay, you can make mistakes like that.
Does the budget committee have to...
Yeah, we're gonna make a recommendation on the secret ballot.
Okay, there we go, we all have to vote on it.
Recommendation, yeah?
Yep. All right, are we talking about all of the, the two or three of these or just one at a time?
Just the fireworks.
Just the fireworks.
Just the now fireworks.
Make that motion.
Motion, those are made and seconded to remove the Fourth of July fireworks, forty-five hundred dollars to the secret ballot. Recommendation to approve, select, the budget committee. Five, one, action. Thank you. All right, and the other, we're just gonna move, the cemetery thing will just move.
We'll remember all these. What else you got, Denny?
I got one final one, and it's just a question. Under the contingency article thirty-eight, to see if the town will incorporate the general fund, boat excise tax collected in twenty sixteen, it was nine fifty. So I assume that money wasn't spent, so we're gonna appropriate it from that fund and then, and from the water quality fund, the other that you announced, that the, to the Belgrade Lakes Resource Center for the water center, that's the one. This article amends the twenty thirteen lead town meeting. That was in, that was in twenty thirteen, that was in twenty fourteen, I think, that that article was actually adopted. It was the twenty thirteen town report, but I think that was in twenty fourteen. But that's just a little issue. The question I have is, is the intent of that is to do that every year? In other words, have you completely annulled? The article is adopted in twenty thirteen, Italian report, Article nineteen, which read to see if the town will vote to use fifty percent of revenues generated from the boat excise taxes collected by the town to fund the established water quality improvement fund, with the article to remain in effect until changed by a future vote. Is that intended to be from now on, is it intended to annul this article?
The, the, that article is only gonna be an article if Article nine is defeated. If Article nine passes, then that isn't gonna be even an article.
That was the one for the...
Nine is for forty thousand.
Okay, well, I guess my point is if, say it doesn't pass and you have to use this article, was that intended to be ongoing? Was that intended to annul the purpose of the Article thirteen, nineteen from two thousand fourteen?
Are you seeing that if...
Or is it a one-time issue? I mean, that's all I'm asking, is it a one-time issue?
Well, the original article from a year or two ago was meant to be continuing the article.
Right, until change.
Right. But I don't think it was our intent to actually nullify that. I don't think, I don't know if we thought about it, because the way it sits now...
How much?
Wait, wait, read it from two thousand fourteen again, for me to...
From two thousand, well, from the town, two thousand thirteen, the report voted on the fourth. To see if the town will vote to use fifty percent of revenues generated from boat excise taxes collected by the town to fund the established water quality improvement fund, with this article to remain in effect until changed by a future vote of the town. This is a future vote of the town. My understanding is that you really weren't trying to change this. That's what my expectation was. But it does change it in the sense that it says by future vote of the town. So the question is, if you're going to have that article, shouldn't you say for one year only, for this year only, or something along those lines?
But it is the intention to change that article because what we had discussed with the folks from the lakes associations was to give them the entire amount of boat excise beginning next year. Because this year we can't because half of that money is already appropriated for something else.
No, I hear you. I mean, again, this is good clarification, so next year you would have an article in that says all boat excise taxes goes to the water quality improvement fund for use for whatever purposes, you know.
Unless they bring out another petition?
Well, I, I don't know, I just, I just didn't wanna lose the twenty fourteen article if in fact that's not what we intended.
Well, at this point, it isn't, and I, I, I'll give you a copy of this, Denny.
You know, it says that...
This, this is part of the, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna talk about this at all. I'm just, I'm gonna pass this around, give this to the, whoops.
Yeah, Denny, the article says amends it, it doesn't say it nullifies it.
Well, I know, but it's amended to this.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that will continue.
There's one for everybody there.
You revert back to the original article.
Well, if it said that, I wouldn't know the...
We can say that.
Well, I guess there's one extra one, because there's only two of them. Basically, I'm not here to talk about this tonight. All this here is, is just a heads up to everybody. I have got some people and we're gonna go door to door and deal with Article nine. And these are my thoughts on Article nine, and this is part of the history of Article nine. And I'm starting to have resolutions and concerns now about the boat registration dollars. And if you read what I'm gonna be telling people of this town, you'll understand why I'm very frustrated with the situation that we are now facing. First off, the water quality fund is a fund that potentially is gonna be hit on pretty hard. We still have unsolved issues down in Pickham's Cove. We just spent whatever it was, sixteen thousand dollars, our share of one well over here. So when this organization came forward and pleaded, and Dan was there at the time, and the board has changed drastically, but I think he was there at the time, but they came because they had this special deal and we always gave basically nine thousand nine hundred dollars to this group. And then they had this special thing where they were gonna get all kinds of money, so we reached into the water quality fund because we said we wouldn't tax people for these dollars because it's a donation. And we pulled money out of the water quality fund. Then they came back another year, oh geez, we can, you know, we can still get this money. So we, again, did it again. Now it's a regular habit, forty thousand dollars. And they, because the board last year, and I'm just giving you an update, because the board last year made it clear, we are not gonna raise tax dollars to give to you people. We will offer you the boat registration dollars, but we can't tax our taxpayers to give you money. We just, it's just, you know, we used to give you nine hundred ninety, nine thousand nine hundred dollars and now it's forty thousand dollars. And these numbers that I have here, this is their tax return, which is public information. These numbers are not false. So you're looking, we're looking at, we argue about spending a hundred dollars for a light down here at the cemetery, down here at the library. The library people, why don't they do a petition? Why don't the churches do a petition? Why don't, why doesn't Jugg group, the historical society, do a petition? Because it's unethical. If you wanna raise money and ask for donation, go and ask for it. But we should not be taxing people to make donations. And as you can see, I'm frustrated. But this, I have people lined up now and I have some other data that I'm gonna put together and I am gonna go door to door. I am just so frustrated with this. We made it clear, we, we extended up all the branches, whatever you wanna call it, to give you the boat registration dollars, but please leave our taxpayers alone. Wasn't good enough. That's the history in a nutshell. And I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but I was just gonna hand this out.
I didn't need to bring it up.
Well, I didn't, I don't want to hear from you.
He would do say something.
But having said that, I have, I understand what's going on in various circumstances in town. I understand what they're expressing as their needs. And, you know, my view, I support, I'm on some of those... I support some of those needs. Having said that, that's not where I was going. I just wanted to make sure we were doing what we wanted to do or not with that particular article. My understanding is if Article nine, if I'm, if I'm correct, if Article nine fails on the floor, you go through the contingency article, and then what that does is a one time thing. It's only a one-time thing if you say that.
I don't see a problem saying that.
But...
No, that's fine.
Yeah, but it will because you're amending that forever article.
Well, not, you're not amending, you're taking money now and targeting it some other direction.
Well, the, the article says it, amends it.
Yeah.
Well, I know it says it, but that's not what the intent is, I read that article. You intend to take the nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars that you're gonna give to the water quality improvement fund, add to the nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars that you're gonna give to offset the, what was the other thing?
Water quality and the boat registration.
That's the other half of the boat registration.
Well, what article number is that?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Thirty-nine, seventy-five. There it is here, yeah, I got it. So, you got, right out, to, to, to support the water quality improvement fund, and then nine, nine hundred and fifty from the general fund, right? Supposed to go to the general fund. You're gonna add those two together, and instead of going to the, those two things, you're gonna go, for this one-time purpose, into the, the, where is it supposed to go?
What's...
To support the Belgrade Lakes Resource Center.
Yeah, Belgrade Lakes Resource Center, right. So, that's where it's gonna go. You're gonna take the full one. So, the intent, then, is for you to have to continue to have it.
That would be...
No, the intent is for this one year, because half of those boat excise tax dollars are already committed to something else, because you're taking the prior year's dollars. So, there's gonna have to be another article, and next year's town meeting, Warren.
Giving them whatever proportion you wanna give them.
Right.
I think the long-term goal...
Is to give the money to the...
Take the boat registration dollars and give it to the water quality, to our lakes association.
Well...
The long term, but that's not what this article is intended to do, it's not a forever article.
Okay, well, then I understand. One additional thing I would say is, there's no such thing as a Belgrade Lakes Resource Center. There's a main lakes resource center.
Yeah, there is.
The wording is probably wrong, it is a... It's actually the Belgrade Regional Conservation Alliance Incorporated.
It's asking for the money.
I'm just saying...
Well, that's what it should be, Belgrade, Belgrade Regional Conservation Alliance, and that's made up of several layers, so, the wording probably should be...
Yeah, we originally put it, give it to the, gave it to them, because they're the only ones that cover all the lakes. So, it should go to the BRC.
The Belgrade Resource Conservation Alliance.
The virgin one. The virgin one.
Yeah, they're...
Have you completed your massacring of our warrant?
I've only tried to massacre anything, just to try and explain.
Have you got your machete put away?
Dan, you're on.
I just got a question on the last sentence in that article thirty-nine in parentheses. Article thirty-eight is required, Article nine is, if you did, it's not required. Required means like the one for, if you're already paid the salary, you better OES on this, it was required. You gotta change the way that's, because that looks like a hash for hash.
Yeah.
So, Article thirty-nine is considered?
How, how was it worded with the rec. department in the facility stuff? How was that worded?
Article twenty is, that's wrong, two, Article thirty-eight is required, if Article five is required, that's, you know, that's the way it's done.
Can we just say...
It's not required, it's getting...
Article thirty-eight will be voted on if Article nine is...
There you go. There you go.
It's not required, it's, it's, it's something that, it's an option, it's a matter of stuff.
Yeah, with, with the town stuff, it is required.
The town, because they've already paid the money, they own the salary, it's required, but this isn't required.
Yeah, good point. In parentheses, you mean Article thirty-eight or thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine, the number is wrong.
Okay.
So, what's the wording gonna be? Article thirty-nine is...
Thirty-nine is...
An option if thirty, if Article nine is deleted?
Will be voted on.
Will be voted on.
Will be voted on if Article... If Article nine fails. Me, too.
All right. I'm old. Are we done? Thank you, Dan. Yes, Linda.
So, I just noticed Article thirty-eight. So, Article, the last sentence in parentheses should be Article thirty-eight is required, not Article one?
Yep.
Why we renumbered because of the insertion of another article? Yep.
Yeah, we gotta prove all this again before...
As I said, we should have a proofreading party with, before we create any of these things.
No, Ernie promised he was gonna proofread it for me. The other Ernie.
The other, okay, good.
Well, actually, send it to all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We oughta all take a look at it before it goes. That's why they pay us this big money.
Anything else?
I got another question. I'm gonna pick on administration again.
Okay.
You know, when I get time, I think it gets dangerous.
You spend too much time and you...
Yes, I do, I do, I really do, I get thinking about everything. Well, we, isn't there an account that was set up to pay the difference on the health insurance, what the insurance didn't pay? We self-insured ourselves, I can't remember what the hell it's called.
Health reimbursement.
What it, what's it called?
It's an HRA.
Yeah, okay. Did that drop anywhere, we changed it to an eighty-twenty?
No.
Why wouldn't it have?
Because you're still paying the same amount out of pocket. That covers the deductible that the employee has to pay.
How much, okay, let me ask you this, because how much did we roll from last year into this year's? That's a, when we just roll over into the new income, right?
It's not, it stays in the general fund, and as we use it, they pull it out of our general fund.
So, is it...
So, we actually budget for it, we budget whatever the maximum is, but if employee, that's why we went this route with the HRA, because if the employees don't use it, the town keeps it. It's not something that the employee actually gets.
Is it still three thousand dollars a year?
I think the deductible is twenty-five hundred, and it's thirty-five hundred out-of-pocket maximum for the employee.
I guess I quite, still don't quite understand why, if we went to an eighty-twenty rather than seventy-thirty, why that wouldn't have dropped.
Because it's the deductible, that thirty-five hundred dollars, that HRA with that health reimbursement account, that's what that's covering.
It's not the premium, it's the deductible.
Oh, the deduct, yeah, okay, I got it.
It's not the premium.
You can change...
Yeah, the premium.
The seventy-thirty changes as far as the premium is concerned, but the deductibles are different.
Deductibles.
It's a different feature.
Okay, I'll leave it alone for now, but I may ask some more questions on it, because that's a lot. And if you look at some of the other ones that are out there, I mean, they have no ways near that much.
My understanding is, you know, of course, this is all just historical information. When you, the town switched to the higher deductible plan, and I, I know Dan was part of this whole process, the endless meetings, because I read minutes from a gazillion of them, and you were as well, that, that was the agreement that you guys reached, is that you would fund that health reimbursement account, because it was a much higher deductible plan for the employee each year. And the premium was a lot less expensive.
They would have healthy employees, and they would have to...
Use it.
Draw a lot of that, the town could keep or maybe draw.
Yeah.
Okay, may I answer my question for now? We'll wait till another year.
I'm still shopping.
Anything else?
Me, too.
When's our next meeting?
Seventh of February is a regular meeting.
Next Tuesday night.
Next Tuesday.
And the hearing for these ballot articles.
I'm in Florida, so that doesn't make any difference today.
So, the point is, the other two guys, make sure you appear, because we want to inform.
Kerry, can you put Paul and Danny on that agenda for the next meeting, please, to talk about the, the sign effort that they went through, and they need some help? Fair enough?
I guess. I think we're resolved, but it's really...
Okay.
It's mostly answering questions.
Is there anything else on the, on the more questions, comments, mistakes?
I'll read it open, I'll let you know.
Well, when you get it, it needs to come to us, and email it, and I promise I'll read it.
Yeah, I'll read it, it's the final, this is the final one.
So, the content...
I appreciate if you include the Budget Committee in that.
Yep, sure thing. So, the content, like I said, we, we need to approve this tonight, so it's broken over the ballots. As far as content, you know, my impression of the only thing missing at this point is making sure the articles are numbered correctly, inserting and moving the cemetery, you know, the transfer station went up to where it's...
Changing some wording.
Well, we see this...
So, basically, ballots only the first, nine to ten, right? So, that's all we've really gotta approve till we get the rest of it.
Correct.
All right. Will we use the machine for pulling?
Yes.
So, we're gonna vote now on the amended warrant.
Don't they have to sign it?
They have to sign the back page for the town report.
But we don't have to sign it, but you get the ballot, don't you?
It's not on the ballot.
Okay.
Yeah, that page is on the ballot.
That's right.
So, what do we have to do?
Nothing, couldn't we?
Nothing.
Well, like I said, yeah, I mean, I thought that they had to approve the whole thing.
What's this?
Well, is it probably, or is it...
I don't know.
Well, as long as we vote to approve the stuff so you can do your voting.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but I'm not signing this till it's right.
Well, you know, they always do it, just not remember.
Well, it could be. If you want us to sign, you have a part for the secret ballot part.
Yeah, but it's the warrant.
It's all warrants. All right. So, you will, you will correct and get, can we, can we get that by, by next Tuesday?
I think we're all right.
You think? Tom Manager?
Well, I'm just trying to, to think though, because, I mean, if you're not gonna, can you approve part of a warrant? Danny?
I'm obviously, I'm sorry.
Can you approve a part of a warrant?
You approve, you... Are you asking whether or not you should approve the referendum article one, these warrant articles, or you can, these warrant articles are required to, to a public hearing? So, I'm not gonna answer that question.
It's only the warrant, it's only the ballot.
God, he's a coward, Danny.
Just get him on it.
Well, I'm trying, I was trying to think back.
We'll sign it Tuesday.
I couldn't think back for a...
We'll sign it Tuesday.
Just get the things audited.
Get it out to us.
The ballots can be audited.
It's not gonna take any time, there's changes in that.
All right, let's get back on track here, guys.
I recommend we just let it get, the things you need audited, we'll sign it.
So, what's your drop dead date for the, for the town report?
The third.
The third. We're not meeting till the seventh.
Right.
So, what do you need from us to get the town report going?
A signature.
Have to, it's right. Well, you stop and do that, though. If I remember right.
But you gotta, you gotta approve all this stuff before that.
Right.
All right, we should, we should, we should vote and pull it, though, not just come in